All right, we're gonna open the Utilities Commission meeting. It is 7:34 PM Eastern Standard Time. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes of the Utilities Commission meeting of August 16th, 2014.
I move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Let the record show that we unanimously approve the minutes. Cash on hand and in the banks for the Utilities Commission. Total cash on hand comes to $935,720.39. There's also capital funds for water and sewer hookup in the amount of $191,400. Our third order of business under Utilities Commission meeting is the payment of the bills.
Move the bills be paid as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Let the record show that we unanimously agreed to pay the bills for the Utilities Commission. Our fourth order of business is Mr. Bob Sykes is always scintillating Utilities Commission report.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Couple of things have happened since last meeting. At the water plant, we had to do some rehab on the filters. There's an air wash inside of the filters, like an air header. It broke in a couple of them, and that had to be repaired. At the wastewater treatment plant, our seasonal limit for phosphorus, we are very close to an exceedance, which would be a permit violation. We've had problems over there with the phosphorus at the injection point where it actually, the aluminum chloride that we feed rotted the steel pipe. If you can imagine, a ductile iron pipe that's almost three quarters of an inch thick, it turns it into clay. So, we tried a stainless steel band that's supposed to be chemical resistant. It also corroded away. So, I wound up having to get a full band steel that's epoxy coated with a special epoxy that is specifically resistant to the aluminum chloride. Since then, it's just been a matter of getting the feed going right again because they were having to adjust up and down based on what was happening in that vault. Now, all the chemical issues were contained in the vault. Nothing leaked out, nothing else got in. It was just a matter of keeping the feed right when you have that leak.
PCP or anything like that wouldn't work?
PVC over there, you're talking about an 18-inch line, and there's not physical room inside of the vault to cut out the steel pipe to replace it with the PVC and do an injection point. And the PVC also doesn't hold up well to aluminum chloride. We found that out because we were getting nipples. When we received the aluminum chloride, we receive a tanker at a time, 4,500 gallons. They use camlock fittings. They're the ones, you see them slide onto the pipe, they pull down two ears and everything goes. The aluminum ones that were furnished with the plant lasted one delivery. So, we said, "Let's find something else." So, then we tried plastic, and plastic lasted one delivery. So, what we wound up with is a special resin that had to be special order for that. Same thing with the epoxy coating that we had to have put on the saddle. It's a special epoxy coating. An epoxy is just a two-part mixture. With an epoxy base, this is an epoxy that is specifically resistant to aluminum chloride. It's one of the most corrosive chemicals that I've ever dealt with. On our first delivery, because of the design of the plant, the engineer hadn't compensated for fumes. It was actually vented inside the building. What it did was corrode every piece of metal in the building, just the fumes from it. The heater had to be replaced, all the electrical boxes, stainless steel electrical boxes are corroded. It really does a number on any metal. So, it took getting the saddle made up, and Dover Plumbing helped us with that.
And there is no other chemical can be used in place of that?
Well, there are, but they all have their own issues. What makes the aluminum chloride work so well? What we did, when we got the plant put in, I asked around other plants that were feeding chemicals for phosphate removal. There's aluminum chloride, there is ferric chloride, and mixtures in different degrees of aluminum chloride, ferric chloride, and some other chemicals. What you get is at low temperatures, the other chemicals will solidify in the lines, and over time, they build up on the pipe walls and end up causing you clogs, and you have to replace the pipes or find a way to flush them out really good. Denton was specifically helpful with that because they had been up and running with the same type of plant for years, and they had gone through the process of trying different chemicals. The benefit of the aluminum chloride is it doesn't do all that. The downside is the corrosivity. And the ferric chloride is also corrosive. If you were to vent that inside of the building, the same thing would happen. So, it's the chloride part of it that really gives off the fumes. Also, at Washington Park, the main pump station over there on Kennedy Drive, we had to replace both of the pumps. It seems that they're getting a lot of flow, more than we expected, and I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna look into upgrading the pumps. They just seem to really be working hard to keep up with the flows. Because it's picking up, when it was originally designed, it was designed for Washington Park. When Coventry 1 went in, there were some small upgrades. When Coventry 2 went in, we looked at the runtimes on the pumps, and we were only at about an hour and a half. So, we decided not to upgrade them, but since then, we've seen the flows steadily increase.
What exactly are those pumps pumping?
Sewage. Sewage. And one of the issues are the things that people put down the drain. Those are grinder pumps, but they are not intended to handle things like cotton, shop rags, oil products. The seals are specifically susceptible to oil. The impellers, we had one actually get a crack across it that is made out of stainless steel. Well, stainless steel is very hard to crack, so we don't know what hit it, but something really impacted the pump. We're trying to get it covered under a warranty because it was a new pump, but we haven't heard back from them yet. And that's all I have.
All right. Questions or comments for Bob Sykes?
One other thing, you asked me to update you at every meeting on the hospital. I haven't had anything else since the last meeting. They're still reviewing and putting together the report based on the information that they gathered, and I haven't heard anything.
We weren't expecting that from October anyway.
Right.
In some ways, that's not unusual for you not to hear anything, right?
Exactly. In this case, it was expected not to hear anything.
I'm looking at expectations.
Any other questions or comments? All righty. We're gonna close the Utilities Commission meeting. Is there?
Motion to close the Utilities meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right, the Utilities Commission meeting is closed. And with that, we are going to open the Mayor and Council meeting. Usually, that's when Bill Understock makes his grand entrance, so we'll see what happens. But until that happens, our first order of business is to approve the minutes of the Mayor and Council meeting of September 2nd, 2014, and the Marina Shiret of August 27th, 2014. There was a request to push the approval of the Marina Shiret minutes to our next meeting, since they just were sent out today, which Jen said is doable. So, why don't we, could we approve the minutes of the Mayor and Council meeting of September 2nd, 2014?
Did you do it?
I moved, I thought you wanted to question the 2000. I was gonna bring it up under the financials, but, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, that's an accurate record of what we did, what we discussed.
All right, so there's a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, we just approved the minutes of the September 2nd, 2014. Cash on hand and in the banks. Currently, the total cash on hand for unrestricted use, according to this report, is $1,335,416.4.
That's where I wanted to make my comment.
Go ahead.
I really, looking at the minutes and my memory of our last meeting, is we did not vote to unrestrict the money from Washington College. In fact, I thought the tenor of the discussion was we all agreed to change its designated use from rails to trails to use for the Marina. But I understood that to mean it would still be a restricted fund and would not disappear into the general fund. And I would like to see us so designated that it's to be used primarily for the matching funds for the grant for the Marina.
What would you exactly call the fund?
We could go on calling it what it was called before, which was, what was it? I forget.
Restricted funds, what it was called before.
It was listed as restricted. Restricted, as far as I'm concerned, it should still be restricted.
That's fine. I think the last.
It was called the Washington College donation restricted you.
There was some statement about being restricted to capital.
Projects, I said that.
To the rails and trails. You said that. There was no motion, though.
No, there was no motion or vote on restricting it, so.
Something we had to get used to, the changes. So, it's however you guys want it.
I'd like to see us keep track of it separately, as we were doing before.
We'll continue to do that, but it's not restricted only to rail trail.
In fact, it's not, it's not to the use for that anymore.
To the Marina? It's not restricted to anything.
I think we should say, Washington College funds restricted for Marina. Something like that.
See, there was an agreement on that, actually.
It did not, it did not pass.
Well, we didn't have a motion. That's why it's always good to have a motion. You know, we talked about it, we made some suggestions, and I think the idea of it being restricted to capital funds, you know, is really an important distinction from the regular general funds elsewhere. But, you know, we'll work on, this is just a monthly cash on hand thing. It's not really a true record of all the financials.
I hope it's a true record of cash on cash on bill.
It is with that, it is with that.
Of course. I would like to see.
It's not a, it's not a whole audit.
What would you like to see before the next meeting when we get this same spreadsheet?
Well, Marty, as I recall at last meeting, was not willing to have it fully restricted for Marina use only, but to be decided on a project-by-project basis.
That's exactly right. There's lots of things that come up from time to time that that would fit nicely.
I would like to see it reserved for capital projects, and that would decide on.
It'll reappear next month in that, moving, just like that.
I'd like to see it put the way the gift was given for the master planning and infrastructure of the waterfront.
I object to calling it a gift.
The armory is on the waterfront.
I'd like to see it used for the waterfront, because I think that's our biggest, you know, one of my biggest challenges.
No doubt about that. Okay, so, next, at our next meeting, we will show the 200,000, which, some of which has been spent.
Thirty-two fifty.
On the rail trails.
One ninety-seven.
We'll show it as restricted.
No, it was spent to pay part of the TSA support fee.
Yeah, it wasn't spent for rail.
A little bit of it was.
That's the only money that's ever come out of it yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, let's show that at our next meeting. The next order of business is the payment of the bills. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved, as submitted.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let the record show we unanimously agreed to pay our bills. Our fourth order of business is the Ziegler-Sneed presentation of the NEA Concept Plan, Public Arts Master Plan. Are you with Ziegler-Sneed?
You didn't know, huh?
The next couple minutes here?
More to Mr. Sneed, more.
So, this project had its start a couple of years ago when a group of Chestertown residents got together and decided that what we really need is a children's playground, preferably at Wilmer Park. This evolved into a grant request that went to the National Art Institute for the Arts. Chestertown being what it is, I think it sells itself beautifully for grants of this sort. National Art Institute for the Arts ended up awarding Chestertown one of the two grants from the Art Town program in the state of Maryland. The grant was sought with the assistance of River Arts. Lady Stankley is here from River Arts. They were the partner group for that grant request. The funding was $25,000 from the NEA program, $25,000 cash match from the town of Chestertown. We had two goals basically for the grant. One was to create a public arts master plan for the town. You can see the map over there, which was one aspect of that public arts master plan. And the second was to fund an inaugural public arts project, which in this case is the playscape or playground that the public art had at Wilmer Park. Your role tonight is basically to listen to the representatives from Ziegler-Sneed, that ultimately, the public arts master plan, what we'd like to see is have that adopted as part of the Chestertown comprehensive plan, maybe as a sub-area plan or in some such role. I just wanted to read something real quick from the Art Town program, because I think this sets the tone for the grant very nicely, that art works to support creative, economically competitive, healthy, resilient, and opportunity-rich communities. Excellent art is an essential part of building a strong community, as important as land use, transportation, education, housing, infrastructure, and public safety. Artists and community development practitioners across our nation, sometimes one of the same, sometimes working together, are striving to make places more livable, with enhanced quality of life, increased creative activity, a distinct sense of place, and vibrant local economies that together capitalize on their existing assets. The NEA defines these efforts as creative placemaking. We have two representatives here from Ziegler-Sneed. Ziegler-Sneed is a nationally-known architectural firm that was just awarded the NEA's Architecture Magazine Top 50 Architecture Firms in the nation. Doug Boffler is here. He's a senior associate at Ziegler-Sneed and a designer. After their brief presentation, Lady Stankley is going to speak on behalf of River Arts. Carl Vesoni is here, owner of Carl Vesoni Gallery, and Alex Castro, who's with Washington College's Sandbox Program. These are three of the stakeholders of a much larger group of stakeholders that participated in the shiret process that has led to the public arts master plan.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us. It's a pleasure to be in front of all of you, as it has been for the past few months coming to Chestertown and meeting all of your amazing constituents who have participated in this process. We're a firm of about 25 people right now, and it gives us great pleasure to work for towns like you, for people like you, on really important projects. We believe wholeheartedly that bringing and connect art and people is one of the kind of fundamentals to create great places. So, we have a lot to work with already. The town of Chestertown is a phenomenal place with incredible arts-oriented people already, and the grant that you all wrote was perfect. It set out a very well-defined mission, which is to create a public arts master plan based on the themes of art, history, and environment, to ensure that public art would be integrated into the social and ecological fabric of Chestertown. And we all know that it already is, but to have a plan in place to map out the future, to ensure that public art is integrated into other planning projects, is really fundamental, a very clear vision. And to know that this public arts master plan will be incorporated into the comprehensive plan gives us great pleasure, because we can draw a plan, but if it's not a living document that's well-integrated, then it isn't worth doing. The goals were really set forth as well by you, and we were just your scribe. To build community is number one, and we've seen that throughout this process. Over 100 people attended two shirets, so even during the planning process, we're building community by opening up dialogue around art, history, and the environment that's unique to Chestertown. And wonderful. To create meaningful places is, was the second fundamental goal, and I couldn't say it any better than Case just quoted, that art is one of the core components of good placemaking. It gives purpose to bring people into the community and gives them something to talk about and gives them something to experience. Reinforce identity. Chestertown has a normal identity. It's reinforcing that identity for your own people, residents, but also reinforcing it for the visitors that come through, that you wanna hold on to, to stimulate the economy, because it is, art is a driver of economic activity. The state of Maryland, the two images you see up there are a result of the state of Maryland, Maryland State Arts Council surveyed and kind of put together data related to arts in the state of Maryland, and recognizes that art-specific activities generated over $1.07 billion in revenue over the past five years, I think, which includes 427 million dollars in new salary, 12,000 jobs. So, art can be a very significant component to drive the economy. So, a little bit about the process. Coordinating with Case, who's done just a phenomenal job. We had a public shiret in June in the Garfield Theater. Over 80 to 100 people attended, and it was really great. It was our chance to get to know the people of Chestertown. It was our chance to get to know the places in Chestertown that were important to people. And it was our chance to get to know the types of art that people wanted that are integrated into their public places. And it really boiled down to, in this meeting, the what and the where. And you'll see, we brought with us a blank map of Chestertown and stickers of different colors that represented different types of art activity, whether it be a festival, a performance, the historic exhibit, green spaces. And we had, we invited the public to come take those stickers and place them on the map, and it was really amazing. I don't have the slide to show you how that mapped out. We aggregated, synthesized all that data, and overlaid it onto the various locations. And I bet I could ask anyone what the number one kind of place in Chestertown that people wanted activity in, I mean, Wilmer Park. It's a huge asset. It's public space, it's green space, it's got waterfront views. A lot of people, there's a lot of energy around Wilmer Park. So, on our plan, you'll see that we've placed a lot of energy on Wilmer Park, and it creates a great opportunity, but it is by no means the only opportunity. We have the Marina, which you're working on currently to integrate this thinking into the Marina plan, the sandbox activities that are happening, Washington College properties, the waterfront, so, and of course, the core business downtown, bring people into the city to walk through and see some of the historic structures. So, a really great process. That coupled, and connecting them all with an art path, which, there's great walking, but to codify a path through all of these things and into the landscape to connect art and history and the environment, it really came out on time. So, the plan, it's behind you on the wall there, and it's, let's see if I can zoom in. I just mentioned Wilmer Park, but really broke down into the what and the where on the plan. Gateways were really important. The 213 Bridge or the roundabout, how, we really wanna highlight planning around those two areas, because they're the, you know, real gateways to the city, so incorporating public art to help start to tell the story of what Chestertown is and who you are. That's a great branding opportunity. So, art and branding is a dialogue that can be fueled by this. Historic exhibits, those that you currently have, those stories that need to be better told or identified, so they are on the map as potential locations, but by no means are they comprehensive. The art path connects many, many historic places that we chose not to identify, because they're already being told, but we wanna make sure we link them on that art path. Permanent art is what you might consider a sculpture on a plinth or a, it's an art object that's integrated into and experienced. That is a lot of times what people think of as public art, but we believe that it's a much bigger conversation. Playscape, it's the inaugural project. It was identified that Wilmer Park is the best place to do that, to capture, you know, kids' attention and give them an experience around art that is playful and to capture the family was hugely important. And we've also identified a place for the northwest as well in that environment. Environmental art is a huge component to this. You have an incredible environment, the intersection of water and land, and Sandbox is already kind of capitalizing on this wonderful place to do great work. And so, we've identified areas that are large for Sandbox to do, to do their thing, but also smaller interventions along the art path that are great opportunities for environmental art. The art path itself, as drawn on the map, represents the 100-year flood plain, so that is in of itself an environmental art piece. And there are artists out that do these pieces that would be commissioned or could be commissioned that highlight certain aspects of the environment. And there's one, I'll just tell you briefly. You've probably heard of the wave organ, where a jetty, a jetty is built to protect the water's edge, but that jetty responds to waves hitting it with an acoustic element that an artist has kind of tuned, so it really activates the edge. And then another artist has played with putting LED lights out in the water that change color based on the salinity of the water. So, you could, you could study or you could experience in an artful way the fact that the phosphorus is, if we're just a little bit too high in our phosphorus around town, and you could see and potentially experience in an artful and educational way what's happening in your environment beyond just the stellar view that you have.
Just careful of all those acids in the water, you know.
So, that's, the environmental art is one. Outdoor performance, again, leveraging Wilmer Park, keeping the view and putting performance art space as part of perhaps a reconstructed ballpark at the edge, so that it doesn't block the view on non-event days, but that stage could be erected there. Stepney Farm is a great development opportunity, and you can see a proposed future vision for that that could be different than what you're seeing there. What's important to us in that plan are twofold, extending the city grid into that area, improving some of the vehicular and pedestrian intersections and cycling intersections, but creating an axial greenway between the manor and Wilmer Park, which you can kind of see there, that could be used for performance space, that could be used for environmental art, that could obviously highlight the manor house. could obviously highlight the manor house itself as a historic exhibit. Of course, that's with Washington College to work those things out, but identifying how that property might be developed was important to us in this plan, to integrate public art into the bigger capital project. So I think that's nutshell on the what and the where. But we also dug a little bit into theorizing and researching how you do this. And we probably reviewed 20 different public restmaster plans and have other towns much larger than yours. You are the smallest, and I highly love that because it's an endeavor to put this together. But leveraging your existing constituents that are arts-related, State Rivers, River Arts, the Missoni Gallery, Kent County Art Council, these folks are already working really hard. So leveraging them as a nonprofit partner in a public-private partnership to pull this off seems to be like a very good model. So you'll see on this chart in our final report that's in draft form currently, that a public arts consortium could be created, a new nonprofit organization that has representation from all of the various existing arts organizations or vested interests. And they would be the private partnership. They would be in charge of fundraising to make sure that the plan has adequate funds to move forward. They'd be writing grants. They would be writing proposals to artists to create great work of art for Chester Town. Inside that organization would be a public arts administrator, a staff position that basically is the wheeler and dealer to make sure this all gets done and interfaces with the zoning administrator and the city and the town with you all. The public arts consortium would nominate every year members for you to consider for what we're calling the Commission on Public Arts. Those are seven to nine arts and design professionals, people in the know who know what's happening in the arts world with respect to either public art or with temporary changing art or with festivals or performance art, people that have vested historic or environmental connections that could come together on a basis that will be set forth by someone else some other day. They would come forth and select projects to be implemented, to spend the money to implement. And so they would be a riddle to basically curate the public art over the next decade because this is a long-term plan that I think we, we think it has a lot of legs, and we're very excited to be here. It's, like I said, you are a very small community putting together a very broad vision, and I commend you all for it. It's fantastic and we're thrilled to be a part of it. So that's what I have for you, and I'd love to open it up to you. Thanks very much.
I'm Lani Saichley, and I'm representing the board. The Public Arts Master Plan funded by the NEA, NEA, Airtown Grant and facilitated by the Ziegler Sneed Architectural Firm was the product of an inclusive and engaging process that produced thoughtful input from a sizable cross-section of our community. The plan will be an incredible resource for us as we move forward with implementation. Will be, will apply for grants and solicit donors piece by piece, though not in a piecemeal way because we have a master plan. Investors, builders, planners, town council members, and other stakeholders will benefit from this identification of where we hope to display, interact with, and incorporate public art. In the process of developing the plan, we recognize that not everyone shared the same definition of public art. I believe the description written by Elizabeth Umbenauer, landscape architect who teaches public art at the University of Washington, describes how we follow up public art in our planning discussion. She says, "Art fulfills a variety of functions within the public sphere, providing opportunities for, among other things, artistic self-expression, community dialogue, education, and enjoyment. Inspiring participation and appreciation and creation of art, community problem-solving, enhancement of the physical infrastructure and environment, and demarcation, celebration, and transformation of place." And place-making is really where the grant money is these days, so I think that speaks well to that. And though that definition probably didn't clear up any confusion, I did want you to at least see it's a much broader concept than maybe what some of us have thought of public art in the past. When we brainstormed ideas, we envisioned the inclusion of beautiful walkways and landscapes along our waterfront and through our town with interactive and interpretive displays that focus on our environment and art history as two of the major themes. An amphitheater of arts along the waterfront for live performances, sculpture and art installations that interact with nature, and a playscape for children that integrates a much-needed play area as a piece of art. Though the work of choosing and funding the public art for the locations identified in our public arts master plan lies ahead, having a clear idea of what we want to create and where certainly provides us an excellent foundation and starting point. I look forward to using public arts to share our rich history and our love of the environment with our residents, as well as to attract additional tourists to interact with the compelling and exciting public art we will bring to Chester Town. Thank you.
I'm Alex Castro. I'm a member of the Public Art Commission from Maryland and a former member of Baltimore City Public Art Commission, and presently Director of Washington Sandbox Program, which is a bit of an enigma for some people, but I'll try to set it straight. It's an initiative aimed at creativity in the natural environment and program that very much is in sync with the plans presented here this evening. Sandbox brings artists to the college and to Chester Town to create, for the most part, experimental works of art using the stepping manor grounds and often waterfront campuses. These works are usually temporary, they may last for some time depending on the work. Given the extremely thoughtful and creative plan developed by Ziegler Sneed, much of our output would be open to view along the proposed paths throughout Stepney, the waterfront, and through town. So there's this sync between Sandbox, what we're trying to do at Sandbox and what has been talked about here, very strong. So we're very excited by the potential of this master plan and are enthused by the support it has received. More and more towns are seeing the tourist benefit and the cultural benefit brought to their own communities by public art that is readily available to view. While towns such as Pasadena, California, Louisville, Kentucky, San Diego, Atlanta, and many more establishing public art master plans, they realize the magnetic force of public art. And the very fact that the NEA issued the town grant to us allowing this study is a great commendation of Chester Town's effort in and of itself. And that was a real coup getting that grant. And a pat on the back, a good housekeeping seal approval, whatever you want to call it, it was a real push forward. But this promise across Chester Town aims is exciting. We're already becoming known as an arts town and building on a tradition of art. We now find ourselves in the midst of the National Music Festival, the Art Alley, the Houses River Arts in Hagland Blast, the Bob Wiltie Studio, the sophistication of Carla Missoni's gallery, the Ever-Growing Jazz Festival, the G.A.R., the Garfield, and now Clayworks, which is coming to town. And that's just, that's just the beginning of all. And of course Sandbox, which I'm very proud of. If there ever was a town that manifests a variety of strong art components, it is Chester Town. And with interest in the arts at a high point, shown by the increase in the number of museums and sculpture gardens across the nation, it is timely that we are developing a plan and a forward-looking attitude about the arts that could do much to bring special attention to Chester Town. That we can weigh history with the environment and the environment with art is clear. I personally feel, having been here four or four or five years, this is the most vibrant time to be in Chester Town. So I really commend this project to you.
Well, I'm really excited about the project and have been from the beginning, but I'm coming at it from a slightly different way. I'm not a nonprofit. I have one small business downtown, but you all know I have spent a lot of time and a lot of energy loving this town, trying to be an activist in this town, and trying to see us really be able to stay vibrant, but to stay economically strong, to be able to grow in ways that we want to. And I think that that's very important as we look at that little set of circles, art, history, environment. All are important. And what do we mean by environment? I think that's a very interesting concept right there in that we are going to be facing all sorts of environmental issues that our community in our town needs to look at. And I think this is one of the exciting challenges for us. How are we going to bring all of these things together and present it in such a way that people see us as leading the charge for rural communities? What are we doing to make our community safe, grow, and be something that's going to be important as we move into the future? Well, it's our history, and I think it's our arts, and it's also going to be the environmental issues that we'll be facing, and how we address them, how we look at them, how we approach them. You all know that for two years, I've been working with a combination of groups. Our wonderful DCA, the DCA is actually, couldn't be more activist now if it tried. It's just a terrific organization, and we're really doing some wonderful things together. The Greater Chester Town Initiative is something that started two years ago. And how did it come about? It came about to basically look at the issues we were facing, the economic issues of growth. How are we going to deal with the loss of retail? How are we going to deal with the struggles that all small towns have now on the eastern shore? One of the key things that came up in that, and I guess one of the things I would say, this isn't about just looking at art, it's looking at who do we want to be? One of the key things we felt was missing from the very beginning were young families. How do we attract young families? What are they coming for? What are they looking for? What is exciting to them? Oddly enough, that's how this little playground thing got started. If you don't have something that is in the midst of your town that says, "Welcome to a young family," how are they supposed to feel like this might be the community that they would want to settle in? So just something as simple as that, that it's user-friendly to the community. Through that, we came to the ideas of branding. How do we brand? How do we think about who we are? Branding is something that is done essentially by looking at the assets that you have and seeing how you might pull those assets together, develop an identity, and move forward. The arts became, actually, one of the exciting things when we were gathering information about assets was that the arts, the nonprofits, the festivals, the programs, these were the strong elements that were moving us forward, sort of as we were having other things dropping off. I don't know, and I don't think any of us know, what ultimately the retail world will look like as a result of the Amazon and this and that and the other. But we do know the small specialty stores, we do know that stores of different types of things, those that offer services will be around. But they won't be around if we don't have the population to use them. We're a small community. We say that over and over again. We use, I mean, we, most of us work really hard to shop locally and do things locally. But we have to attract a tourist base. We have to build on a tourist base, and we have to attract the kind of base that supports who we are. And who, what do we stand for as a community? What are we about? We don't want to just bring in tourists for the sake of tourists. We need to bring in people who are coming here to really experience what we're all about, and we need to be able to tell that message. Now, one of the reasons I love the idea that we developed this master plan, and I think the guys have said it very clearly, it's really flexible people. I mean, don't go look at something and go, "Oh, we got to do that." Well, I don't want to do that. Why are we doing that? That's not how this thing has been conceived or thought about. It's flexible. It's about ideas. It's about having an impact, letting you know that when you're going to build a marina, when you're going to put in a trail, when you're going to put in a sidewalk, when you're going to put in a roundabout, we, as part of the arts community, would like to be involved in it. And you're going to lose the activists. We're going to, you know, we'll get old. I mean, there are going to be different people have to step into our shoes. Why do we have to reinvent the wheel every time that happens? The goal here is pull our thinking together, see how it impacts our community, work together effectively. And we have a couple of really interesting things going on right now in our community. I know that you've heard about our Arts and Entertainment District. You've heard about bubbling up with Main Street. You see a very vibrant DCA. All of these things are really kind of coming together at the same time. And I think what they indicate is that we need a central, focused, economic outlook for our community. What are we trying to retract? How do we want to grow? And what is the ultimate economic impact going to be for all of us in this community? Sales throughout the county, sales of real estate, why people bring their companies here. We know that one of the key things is, of course, our wonderful Washington College. Almost all these people who are looking for a place to come say, "I want to live in a town that has a college." We also know that the towns, Rock Hall with its marinas and its boats and that whole energy there, Galena, which is working very hard to establish itself as an antique center, and Chester Town, which is becoming known as an arts community, these are the kinds of draws that people who want to move here, invest here, need to see. We've got a little bit of it, but working together more effectively, I think we can move it forward in a much more precise way, if you will, and really deal with the competition that the Berlins and the other small towns are putting up there for all of those other small rural towns. I loved what Michael Day said when he came to speak to all of us. It's about beginnings. It's about baby steps. It's about one foot in front of the other, and you do that most effectively if you have a plan that you can go back to and you can consult, and you can make decisions one at a time, one area at a time, but you have something that is cohesive that you can use as a roadmap. Thank you very much.
Is there more, Case? So do you want, do you want comments, or should we just? I would say I looked at this and I was very impressed. Sometimes when you bring in outside groups from bigger cities, I don't always feel like they get the town like I wished they had, but I really didn't get that feeling at all looking at this. This is probably the best rendition of Stepney that I've seen, and I've seen quite a few that made me want to run out of the room screaming for my time on the planning commission. I love the walkway and how it's interconnected and brings people back into town. It's basically the exact same, what I was trying to articulate when I ran from there. So I love that kind of activity. The green space, that green corridor, if we could pull that off would be incredible. So I think there's a lot of really, really great tools here on this plan that could really go a long way. My one wet blanket, if there is one, is that so much of that land is owned and controlled by Washington College. They've got to be on board with this, or we just kind of spun our wheels. And I have to say, pinning them down on time tables and what they actually want to do is not easy. It's, I feel like sometimes it's playing catch with a greased watermelon. But they've, you know, hopefully, we've spoken pretty loudly about what some of the important things are for their parcels. And other than that, I think, I think there's a lot of great stuff on that plan that we can really aspire to achieve, and starting with the marina. The one question I would have is, you know, I always come back to like, what can we do like now? What can we do this year? And do we have funds left over to actually put in the playscape that started this whole thing? Because I would like to see that happen within the next calendar year. That's been talked about for a decade.
There's between 10 and 15,000 left of the total project cost to, at least, at the very least, significantly seed that project. And then I think in combination with the public arts master plan serving as a, as something to help us pursue additional funding. And I think there's the opportunity there also for private donations. I think, I think there's a real groundswell of private support for someone like this. And I think once a, once a RFP goes out for artists, we have no idea what that play space will, or playscape will look like. It could be, it's limited only by the imagination of the artist. I think once that project, once the artists start coming up with projects, then--
I guess my point is, I would suggest that, going back to Carla's comment about baby steps, that to me is a baby step on land that we own and a place that we control with some funding that we kind of already have. That would be, I think, an easy, low-lining fruit to pick first, to get this ball rolling. And I'm doing my damnedest to push the ball down the road on the marina, and that's what we can control right now. So I think that would be a good thing to prioritize. As someone who has a young family, one of the few in this room right now that does, it sucked to drive to Churchill to go to a place-- it sucked to drive to Churchill to go to a playground, or Wharton, and it's where the county's seat, it's actually kind of embarrassing. So again, I don't mean to be too pushy about this, but...
How, I'd like to ask Chris and Case together, how do you see this meshing with the comprehensive plan that we're all going to attend another meeting to hear about on Wednesday? It seems to me like it should at least be referenced in the comprehensive plans, other than lost in relation to all our thinking about other aspects of life and planning in town.
A lot of this is already in the comprehensive plan, the waterfront walkway...
Right.
The connectivity, the extension of Mill Street, for instance. There are, there are significant new elements in this plan that I think, you know, as we said, as Carlos said, this is a flexible plan. So it's not like that map is what we're going to do.
Of course not.
But it, but it gives us a roadmap, or at least it gives us something to aim for, that is going, that is absolutely going to be valuable over time. We may not realize every part of this plan, but it's, but it's something that provides a road, a road.
Yeah, just, I'd like to see it a little bit more formal.
The vehicle, the vehicle that we've used in the past, and I've been at both sides of this, is that we put it as an appendix into the comp plan, as something that was accepted by the council, not necessarily adopted or enacted, but accepted. And you put it in as an appendix, if it changes, it's changeable, doesn't have to be changed by a new comp plan. And that way, it's there, it's a placeholder. It's more than a placeholder, really, because we use that all the time, we say, "Is it in the comp plan?" Yes, it is in the comp plan.
That was, that was the case years ago for the waterfront charade that resulted in the public, public pier, the...
It's collected thoughts, collected thoughts put in a place where people can find them.
That's what...
Was there any thought given to the entrances into Chestertown from Galena on 213, and then coming from Millington as well? I feel as if those two particular entrances that we're talking about, gateways, are in dire need of something to spruce it up, and, you know, something to also, you know, make those residents and business owners feel a part of Chestertown as well. I mean, we spent a lot of town, a lot of time and money enhancing downtown, which looks fantastic, partially because of, of course, all that investment. But, I mean, are there things that we can do to further enhance your uptown, if you will? So coming in from Galena, you just hit automatically with two plazas and parking lots. What can we do to enhance those areas and install perhaps art that will complement what people can then experience downtown? Was any, any thought given on that, or...
Well, the, when, when the grant was written, we had, we had to focus on a, on a specific area, so it really was the waterfront and downtown that was the focus. You know, you see that we did, I guess the roundabout provides such an obvious location for something iconic in the center of that traffic circle, that, that was also sort of identified as a satellite location. But there's absolutely no reason that, you know, and I'm glad the plan is spurring that kind of thought, that we, we have other entrances that also could lend themselves to, to public arts. Absolutely, something that, for development in that direction, could be something that's required of the, of the upper.
And Sam, during the conversation before it had to be whittled down, that is exactly where everybody went. Very much understanding that we have these, these, what do they call those round things of...
Gateways.
Yeah, gateways. And, and very much the idea that we, we would take that thinking out and move it further. Again, we had to pull it back in. This is really important, because it does state to people as they're coming into a place, what you're all about, if it began that, that sense of branding. So it, it very much was on everybody's mind, and we were encouraged to brainstorm a little bit about that.
I, I want to echo the mayor's thoughts about getting something done out at Wilmer Park. In my mind, we're probably more famous for planning, and planning, and planning. We plan things, and then we replan things, and then we replan things. And I've been on the council six years, and we're doing a lot of planning. I'd, I'd really like to see something concrete, actually, people would say, "Well, jeez, that's, that's something," you know, it's, it's there, it's physical. And a playground is needed down at Wilmer Park. It's, it's a nice, big, open space, but wouldn't it be nice to be able to take your kids down there? Unfortunately, my, my grandchildren, I have a freshman and sophomore in college, so I don't think he's interested in the playground, but I, I, there are a lot of young people that need that and should have that, and that's something we can do and should do. I'd like, I'm on board with the mayor, I'd like to see it done this year.
Marty, one of the other things that was talked about, too, was all of the play areas and recreation areas we have available to us, so we're really thinking about what is appropriate to each of the areas. So this might be for very young children, and then as you move further up, we have the different places that are more appropriate to ages that can get on a bike and get to it, get over to the middle school, get to the Margot Bailey Park, or whatever. So it was really not even just thinking about having a playground, it was really thinking about all of the recreational facilities we have, and how do we begin to think about all of them and prioritize them and use them? So it went through all of that.
To, to your point about your, your son who's in college or a freshman?
Son, my grandson. My daughter would, I have two daughters, she'd appreciate you thinking that Mike was in college.
I would invite anyone who's traveling to Baltimore anytime soon to visit Pierce's Park. Pierce's Park in Baltimore is a playscape designed by a local artist, and it's a, it's a playground, but it's also, it's an organ, it's a musical instrument, and it attracts every age group possible. So it's not, you know, we're not thinking of the playground as something that you buy and it's bright red and blue and green and it's made of plastic.
Made of plastic.
But it's more made out of pressure-treated lumber. This is a, this is an opportunity to create a work of art that is, that can be engaged by multiple diverse populations that, that excite the mind, that allow a place to get your energy out and be playful, but also to just, to have a different take on what art can be. A lot of, you go to a museum or even a sculpture in a park, and you are really, you're prevented from touching it, and there's no, you're not interacting with art. And playscape is an art intervention that, that allows people to really have a, have a completely different experience.
All right, all right. I would like to see something that's pleasing to the eye, but also functional.
And to the ear, and to the...
There's a chance of doing this. His mention coming on 213, it looks like every town in the United States, you take it, there's a Burger King and a McDonald's and a bunch of signs, and we're, we're done well. We're doing better than most towns in painting that part up, but that's my word, too, so I'm not...
I'll try to be quick, like, listening and being of a young family age and having
kids, will any of this space allow, like, the cross to be involved? Because I know, like, Wharton Park's a little far out there, and we do travel to church in. So do any of the concepts have open space for kids with the cross sticks?
I think the grant we just submitted to the middle school, in theory, is kind of more along the lines of what you're thinking. Where we were, if, if it's a water that is spring, it would pave an exercise track, have multipurpose fields in the middle, where that's basically what we were hoping would happen there.
And then just dandelion. Sadly, the kids that do run around, they'll have the adult supervision sometimes. Down at Cape Charles, and they always had a beautiful thing that said, "Love." Someone was, like, pulling off the beach class, and they probably just have a lot of epoxy to prevent.
Well, downtown Baltimore is pretty rich with people that are unsupervised. And that, no, no work, no work that I'm speaking of. Pierce's Park is entirely made of stainless steel. It's so durable, but it's beautiful. And it changes temperature during the day, so it's different in the morning as it is in the night, and kids will play on different parts of it, and if, it's, you know, if it's, if it's made of wood, it feels like a playground to be analyzed, as it is, but it feels like something else. And it's durable, and relaxing, easy to clean and maintain, and that's a good, yeah, I think it'll...
Was it designed by Zicker Snee?
It will not be.
Oh, oh. You were selling pretty hard, I thought maybe you had something going for you there.
We're celebrating the, the process that you've already put in place, but, but it's just selecting the, the artists and creating art pieces, it's going to be a lot.
Behind your net, you have to check your, your personality and use condoms before you have your first class. They're supposed to pass them in through the staff, and...
Nancy?
Um, Chris, there's another aspect to this which to me is very important. I'm not speaking for DCA, because I'm not president anymore, but during those, those two terms, I talked to a lot of people, because we were concerned about economic development. And the one thing that bothered me, and we couldn't, I just couldn't go beyond it, is that every comment, every ID we had came from somewhere else, and it was sort of standard. Maybe it was not, it's not standard for us, because we're so different, that's probably our greatest economic values, but we are different. And so every time, it was reluctant to sort of adopt one of these things, because it wasn't being created from within. And this whole master plan is exactly that. It's being finally withdrawn from our heart and from what, what we really are, and what is our greatest values is what we have here now. So if we can adopt this, this can be, this is not just an arts plan, this becomes a catalyst for enjoying and emphasizing all that we are, because we're, I mean, I know that I'm prejudiced, but we're incredible. We're beyond most places in the United States, we're, you know, 4,500 people and we're doing this. So I really applaud this. So if we can just, if we can just get this in place, it will lead to so many other wonderful things, and then we will be drawn from within instead of overlaying somebody else's, whatever they happen to do in another town.
Yep.
In planning something for Wilmer Park, let's also remember all the other uses that park has, other than a playground space. It's the Jazz Festival, it's the whatever, and it's almost every weekend in the month, it's being used, a wedding, a whatever. There is space there for something, but let's be practical in what we design that goes there. I like the stainless steel idea. The original concept of mounds of green grass, nya, doesn't work. As a nursery school teacher, that doesn't work.
That's why they wouldn't let Zane come tonight.
You don't even want to think about. But let's remember what Wilmer Park is also used for.
Yep, good point.
I wanted to ask something, too, and I thought about this when I was looking at this list for Arts and Entertainment. And if we want to attract families with young children, I was wondering in the 10-year plan if you would include arts and education. I was thinking about our library, because I went to a meeting, and it's been quite a while ago, and they were trying to figure out how to attract more people to come to the library, what they could do to make it more, outside space and inside space, too. Unfortunately, our library is kind of landlocked, and they do have some outside space there, but I was wondering if you, if your concept ever, or if you worked with any concepts that included libraries? We have one public library.
Well, I think that that's sort of involved in the programming. You know, you have these book festivals, and you have the National Music Festival, things like that, and that's sort of, you know, starts to be incorporated, not just as a physical master plan, but that also becomes about the community, and then including everything.
It's a little out of, you know, the, the area.
It is, but, you know, Washington College is sort of off the map, but it's very much the best of the town.
But it's close enough, yeah.
You know, it's part of sort of a program of change that would be a part of the institution of this master plan, as a sort of holistic thinking, not just sort of physical things that are happening as well.
And if the, the library was open to it, I mean, it would be really nice to, and you start holding arts programs, maybe at the library, and sort of arts speeches and education, you know, to get people there.
All right, I think we could probably take comments on this for another half an hour at least, but we have a long agenda, so I'd like to move on. Thank you, guys, very much for the great work that you did and the wonderful presentation.
Fifty-one. Yeah. Tomorrow we'll be here to win.
What'd you say?
Okay, our next order of business is the police report. Chief Baker.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. I would like to present the statistics for the Chestertown Police Department for the month of August 2014, and as we typically do, breaking down our hours. We had 45 hours of administration, which was 3% of our total. Our criminal investigations were 22 hours, yielding 2%. Our accident investigations were 11 hours, which was 1%. Our vehicle patrol was 766 hours, that was 51%. Our foot patrol was 130 hours, that was 9%. We had bike patrol, nine hours, which was 1%. We had training, 155 hours, which was 10%. Court was 12 hours, which was 1%. 172 hours of overtime, which was 11%. I already distributed the overtime breakdown pie, as I call it, and ensured that the majority, there was a 40% usage covering shift differential, as you recall, we had a couple openings, and we also had an officer on paternity leave, and I think we had 27%, which was special details. That was the Charlie Graves celebration, and we also had a parade at the very end of August related to 1812. We made seven adult arrests, and that involved 16 separate charges broken down. That was five for CDS, three for MPOP, two thefts, two for bad checks, and one each for burglary, failure to obey a police officer, FOA, and trespassing. We had no juvenile arrests, and we had four civil citations, all four were for open containers. We had Part I offenses, which were 16, and we cleared two by arrest, and one was unfounded. We had eight Part II offenses, we cleared six, one was unfounded. Murder vehicle citations issued in '24, our murder vehicle warnings were 111, and the red speed was still pretty significant at 498 miles. Five criminal citations. I, I broke down the red speed, just thinking you might like to see it as Councilwoman Stetson accurately pointed out, if you look at the bottom number there, we had one rather atrocious violation, I won't glorify it by saying it, it said, "Speed detail," but that might be of interest to you, if that's that person's doing.
It wasn't me, was it?
Ninety-two miles per hour.
By Ward, we had...
It only goes as fast as people say they are. Do, do those tickets, do they get exponentially higher the faster you go?
No, sir, it's a flat rate. It happened to be a motorcycle, for what that's worth.
Good grief, he must have a death wish.
How did you catch it?
I suppose perhaps the person thought maybe the camera couldn't activate it, but that wasn't, that wasn't so. We had 3% of our calls in Ward 1, 50 in 2, 16 in Ward 3, 22 in Ward 4, and 2% were outside of jurisdiction. Our busiest day of the week, the days of the week were crime and Saturday, which were pretty close to each other. And then our busiest times were around 3 o'clock to 4, 4 o'clock to 5, and 6 o'clock to 7.
Please explain to Councilwoman Rose that I don't have 50% of the crime.
Yes, ma'am. That's, that was all at Linda's house. That concludes my report, unless you have any questions.
How many officers were on duty in August, full time available?
Yeah, you brought that to my attention last month, and I appreciate that. We, we looked at the cumulative hours and thought it just didn't seem like enough. But when we realized that we only had six that were on, on the patrol production, it made sense. And this time, it was eight.
Eight?
And what you, what we will see in the near future, I just signed off on Officer Spate's field training, I mentioned it, you know, that he and Officer Purper were going through that. Officer Spate just completed that, so, so we've had two officers kind of, always, not kind of, they're literally always working... always working together. So now that Officer Spade is coming off of that field patrol, he'll be independent, actually kind of adding another body to the force.
That's good.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
All right. My next order of business is the town manager's report.
Okay. I want to talk about the Solar Array Bid Award. Does anybody feel like they need the bid opening documents from July 18?
I don't think so. I don't have them with me.
If you want them. After a couple of months of studying this and having our attorney go over the submittals, I would recommend to the council that you award the contract to Solar City with the 4.045 cent low bid for PPA escalating at 0% over a 20-year period. It's by far the lowest bid. Before we talked about building our own system, that was option two or option one, if you recall. Do you have what you need, Marty?
I'd start off with seven.
Sam, you need another?
Okay, I didn't have Solar City.
So Solar City was on the front page, number three, option two, 0.045, escalating at 0%. As I said in previous...
For 20 years.
For 20 years. As I said in previous meetings, I've called other jurisdictions and found that they're perfectly satisfied. But we do have a contract document to go through, and I would say that if you award this, I will return with the contract as approved by our attorneys. And that would be the final, final.
What do we pay again right now?
We're paying 6.8 cents. This is 40.
I just got my bill saying from Constellation, "I'll give it to you for one year for 9 point something." Or two years for 8 point something. You know, this is phenomenal.
This is, if this is legit, and Bill is assuring us that it is, it is, to me, a complete no-brainer.
Well, Wycomico County just signed an agreement with the same company. And as I recall, the news I heard on the Eastern Shore radio station, it was the same, the same amount. It sounds like the same project, basically.
As I said, we've sort of had all the planets or stars aligned for us. And I will return, but I think for tonight, if we could have a motion to go ahead.
I would move that we accept Solar, pending approval of a contract.
I second it.
Later meeting.
Can I ask, and I asked you questions earlier.
There's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion you can discuss.
He didn't ask a question.
Well, he will if he gets a second, and then you...
Then you discuss. Yeah, I second.
I thought you did.
There was a second.
Now you can discuss.
Other question.
And there are no distribution charges added to this.
We talked about that this afternoon. They're completely the same as every other bid. Right now, there are no distribution charges included in their bids or anybody's for a PPA.
And if we can build a new police station, it will take care of that, the utilities?
It takes care of all the accounts that we have.
Right. I mean, this, did they take into consideration this police station or any police, any building that we would acquire?
They would be us. Our RFP included all of our metering. So if they went from one police station to another police station, it would be...
It could be added, and it would be okay.
They want to know consistently what our energy requests are. So that was in the RFP. The RFP is what is a quarter of a new stick. And it was, it was a very good document. Before, as I said, we were leaning towards building a system ourselves and maintaining ourselves. This gets built.
It'll replace the solar panel on this building?
No, it will not. It has nothing to do with it, yes.
I think you need to understand that there will not be wires going directly from that solar power plant to any building in town. The power will go to the grid. We won't necessarily be buying exactly the same power that's generated at the solar plant. We'll be buying power from the company at a reduced price.
I know that.
That's good. So annually, how much are we talking in terms of dollars saved?
I can't give you. I mean, tens of thousands of dollars.
Enough to buy Christmas decorations.
Right now, right now, I can tell you this.
It's half of what we're paying now, right?
Well, we paid Delmarva $10,777 in one month.
The last time that we dropped from nine to 6.8, we saved $55,000 a year. So, I mean, we can sort of estimate that for you.
Yeah.
But I'd say what we would want to move for with awarding this bid, I think we've done our homework on this.
All right, look, there's been a motion and a second. Are there other questions?
With the Marines.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All of our council.
Okay, we unanimously approve to award the bid to Solar City, ending an acceptable contract that Bill will negotiate with the legislature.
I want to bring up a couple of other things before I get into the adoption of this ordinance. With the help of Chief, we hired a new crossing guard who stepped forward in about the second week that we were looking. He lives right across the street. His other job allows him to do this, and the school representatives already knew him. We did our normal checking, and we put him on the, on the job probationally. And Chief, what would you say?
I think he's a perfect fit and outstanding, of course. And it's a win for everybody.
So the school system and the... What's that?
The county, Dan.
The county would pay half as they had before. So he's very happy to have the job, too. It sort of fits into his schedule. Nice gentleman. Also, as another aside, next door, you'd see the electrician's truck there. We're putting LED lighting in the visitor center. It's in one of those MES grants, and that should be done in no time. But I went and looked at it today, and it wasn't more than four or five years ago. We put CFLs over there to lower our cost potential, lower them even more, save a lot of energy, too. Okay, the adoption of ordinance 5, 2014, an ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 30, Recreation Commission and Amendments. I think Liz's idea was to give everybody in the public a chance to look at this for a couple of meetings. So this would be the meeting where the idea was to pass this thing to enact it, if you so desire.
I'm not aware of any amendments, any comments, or any changes since it was first introduced.
We haven't received anything formally here.
Okay, well, if that's the case, do we in motion to adopt this?
I will move that we adopt ordinance 05, 2014.
Is there a second? Second. All those in favor? Any opposed? The record shows that we unanimously adopted ordinance 05-2014, the ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 30, Recreation Commission and Amendments.
So to remind the council, tomorrow night, we have grand opening of the emergency room, 5 o'clock, at the hospital. And one other thing, we sent a letter out. We had a request from Rebuilding Together Kent County. They're putting in a grant to the Maryland DHCD and the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. And in between meetings, the mayor sent a letter of support for that. They've done dozens of homes in this area. And just letting you know that that letter went out. We try to let the council know.
I know, I know a number of people who work in that group, and they do a lot of good work. They really do.
I just gave somebody an application.
Good, good. They do terrific work, and my policy has been to help them with grants, with applications for building permits in town and way to the fee, as we've been doing for, as we used to do for habitat management, too. That's the end of my report.
Okay, that brings us to item seven, the mayor's report. I'm actually going to go from the bottom three. The first thing, I just want to announce to the public record, I'm stalling here, that there will be a public hearing for Luis's Cucina Italiana for beer, wine, and liquor licensing. And that public hearing will be held in the county commissioner's hearing room at 400 High Street, Chestertown, Maryland, on September 23, 2014, at 6:00 PM. So if anybody's interested in sitting in on that, that's when that's going to happen.
I can probably clarify that they have one, but when you move from one location to another, you have to get approval to move that location.
I was just going to ask that. It's also a change in the name.
It's not an additional license in Chestertown. It's the same one, just moving down the road.
So hopefully that won't be very controversial, but you never know. Another reminder, on this Wednesday, September 17, at 6:30 PM, there will be a public hearing held by the planning commission before their normally scheduled meeting for comments on the revised and updated comprehensive plan. That is something that I know the planning commission has worked on for at least a year, probably more like a year and a half. So that's important.
Now, is it at 6:30? I've seen 6:30, 7:00, and 7:30.
It's at 6:30.
6:30.
I've always seen 6:30.
It's here?
It's 6:30 here.
Here.
All right.
7:30, the regular file, the regular meeting is at 7:30.
Because then we know it's an hour.
Yeah. Well, hopefully it'll be an hour.
A sign on the door says 6:30.
Because that's the public hearing. Yeah.
Wait, Chris, would you like the...
I think, why don't we put it up here?
Okay.
Hopefully people will see. The third item under my report, as you all know, we've now had two public charrettes for comments on Chestertown Marina. We have been working with McCrone Inc., an engineering firm, to have them develop this concept plan, which we then put on the website, put out in the lobby, passed out copies during the second charrette, and had the public comment on it. To be honest, the second charrette went about as smoothly as I could possibly conceived and hoped for. I was expecting half the people to run out of the room screaming, but I felt like when we left that charrette with a few small exceptions, people were mostly on board with the general vision that we had outlined in this particular plan. And so to me, what the next logical step in this process is for the council to formally endorse in principle what is outlined on that drawing. And so I sent you guys an email with this list. I don't know if everybody has. I made copies, and I have some extras that maybe we could circulate through the audience and press.
Is there any difference in the email?
You want me to do it?
No, it's no different. So what I did is I made a list basically of the salient, what I think of as salient important features of this particular design, and kind of highlighting areas where we would be making changes to the existing facility. And I know that moving forward, even if we, as a council, endorse this conceptually, that this plan is definitely going to be tweaked. Among other things, we need to hire a landscape architect so that the green spaces are way more defined than they are, and that they look prettier, et cetera. And, you know, maybe the walkways aren't exactly where we show them right now. But in general, I would like us to come to a consensus on what this is going to be.
You don't?
I can be.
Well, I think, you know, thinking about the, the end design of the green spaces right now, it's putting the cart before the horse. I think we ought to look at the most significant parts, which are the docks, the bulkheads.
I agree completely.
The ramp, the kayak, the stuff like that. And I would like to ask that on the second page, raising the grade.
Yeah.
You know what I'm going to say? But that we add the words "at least" the same. Like, let's not, I think, I would like, as you know, to see us raising it more. Or the other alternative is, I like the inclusion of the second part of that, is raising the sidewalks because they would be easier to raise the more than the whole place. The nuisance flooding is going to become more and more frequent.
I agree.
So that, we're designing something for 50, 100 years, not 10 or 20.
I think, I think what I'd like to do is actually just go over this, the sheets, because I hope, I don't know, I didn't necessarily have copies for everybody in the audience. Maybe I should have. So let me just go over these real quickly and kind of point out on this drawing. And I know it's not the biggest drawing we've ever had at a meeting like this. But so in terms of the docks, what we talked about right now, there's just the Cannon Street Pier here, and there's actually two docks here and one dock here. And what we talked about at both charrettes was taking the three downrivermost docks, which are part of the Marina, and condensing them into two, and then taking the existing Cannon Street Pier and putting slips downriver from that so that this facility becomes three docks, which includes the Cannon Street Pier. This shows a 70-foot extension into the deep water, which creates about 14 extra deep water slips. The total number of slips goes from 55, which we show now, to 70. But remembering that those 55 slips that we have now, maybe 25 of them are so heavily silted in that they're really only useful for the smallest jambos that you can get out on the river. We talked about keeping fuel for the boaters. That was a point that came up repeatedly from the public and from the boaters that came to those meetings. We all agree that dredging is needed throughout this entire site. We all also were agree, in agreement that this bulkhead, really starting from the foot of Cannon Street, especially this section, all needs to be replaced and ideally raised. So that's kind of the docks. We also talked about keeping this as a fixed pier so when this is extended, this would all be fixed, but that these two downrivermost docks would be floating so that they rise and fall with the tide, and that eliminates that problem that we have now of they're underwater, like a lot. The Marina store, this is kind of an important one. Right now, the Marina store sits right here. We talked about the fact that this is one of the premier flooding areas, and why not just move that up to the high ground and turn this into essentially a public plaza, a large open space that where people could come sit on benches, and maybe it becomes a multi-use area. The Marina store would feature basic marine amenities, things like oil, fuel, things that like get the moisture out of your fuel, the basics. And also importantly, this would have first-class bathroom and shower facilities for transient boaters, and also potentially public restrooms for people that are just walking down here. I know with Sultana, that's a big problem. We get, you know, sometimes people come directly to the river, and then they really need to use the bathroom, and I have to send them back up to the visitor's center on the other end of town. So that's definitely not set in stone, but that would be, I think, a nice feature. We talked about the fact that the Marina store, if it is up here, is kind of far from the slips, so there would be a small attendant station where one employee could be to collect fuel money and just kind of help people get in and out of their slips or to answer questions. We talked about moving the fuel tanks, which right here are, which right now are right here, and kind of unsightly and regularly flooded, and moving also them up to the high ground somewhere in this vicinity. In terms of boat storage and maintenance, I felt like there's a pretty decent consensus to get rid of this boat shed, which is kind of out of scale and not particularly historic-looking and doesn't really fit with the residences on the other side of Front Street. We talked about eliminating the travel lift and really eliminating the large boat storage. Some of those boats have sat down there for years and are essentially abandoned. But we did talk about also, a lot of people had comments about why all this parking is here. And this here would be used for winter boat storage, but for smaller trailer boats only. So boats in the 12 to 25, 26-foot range. So we could still have a revenue stream from winter storage, but come April, May, we just call the owners and have them come move them off-site, which they could do by just attaching it to their car. Boat ramp, this was kind of a hot-button issue. I felt pretty strongly like most people that attended these wanted to keep the boat ramp. We talked about centering it more with these slips so that you're not launching into finger piers, which is the situation right now. We also talked about putting trailer parking immediately in front of this, right here. There was discussion about maybe trying to move trailer parking to Wilmer Park, which I felt was controversial and probably too much of a hassle to work out. So I think keeping that there was what I thought most people were interested in. I think we showed 12 of these spots. That's something that we could still work on with the design.
Chris, on the trailer parking, I mean, is it necessary to have specially designated larger spaces? I mean, can't you decouple the trailer from the vehicle?
It's theoretically possible, but it's never going to happen.
You don't think? You don't think?
It's a pain.
But people can...
So yes, and a trailer... And a trailer parking spot should be 40 feet long.
Yeah.
We also, because of this boat ramp here, we kind of wanted to create a horseshoe for ingress and egress so that you could come in, have a nice area to pull up, launch your boat, and then pull out. So this is a new ingress and egress point that we don't currently have down there right now. In terms of parking and pedestrian flow, we did redesign the Fish Whistle parking lot a little bit and put these clearly delineated parking spaces here. Right now, this is usually covered with boat storage. There is theoretical parking all here where we're showing it, but none of it is really striped in any way. So right now, we end up with things randomly parked all over the place.
And that would be paved and not gravel?
This would at least be paved, and we did talk a lot about impervious pavers and trying to make as much of this impervious surface as we can.
Make it pervious?
I mean, that's what I meant, pervious. So sometimes when you have these pervious pavers, you show the spaces by having gray strips of different colored pavers. But yeah, it wouldn't just be gravel like it is now, because that's kind of ugly, in my opinion. For pedestrian flow, a big feature on here is this 12-inch wide. Right now, this is maybe eight feet wide, maybe six feet. Do you know Bill, how wide this dock is right here? How this walkway is right now?
Oh, that's about five feet there, maybe six.
Okay. So we're talking about doubling the width of this and creating kind of a boardwalk fuel going around the entire perimeter of the property. This is shown as a 12-foot-wide walkway. And right here, there's a funky jog that's very awkward and actually a little bit hazardous when you're walking around here. We talked about trying to straighten that out. Of course, you've got your plaza here. This is a new walkway we show in front of the Fish Whistle. The walkway could then continue up to the marina store. Currently, we show it going around the boat ramp with an extension in front of Scott's Point. I know that's bound to be a little bit controversial, but that's what we have right now.
Why? Scott's Point?
Yeah, some of the residents aren't really fired up. And there was discussion about, is this really ideal to have the walkway going through a boat?
Well, that's different, but Scott's Point, we have that easement, right?
Theoretically, we do, yes.
I thought it was put in the... When they put in for their permits, it was put in there.
There is language, when that site plan was approved, that this would happen when this marina was rehabilitated, which is in theory right now. Raising the grade, this is a big one. As we know, this whole area floods. Ideally, we want to raise the entire grade of this whole area to, we talked about, at least the level of the existing Cannon Street Pier. Having worked down here now for 20 years, I've only seen this pier underwater during a legitimate hurricane or tropical storm, whereas just about everything else is underwater at this stage, at just about every full or new moon. And if that's exacerbated by strong, persistent southerly winds, it comes all the way up to the pump house, which is right up here. I had an interesting meeting with the owners of the Fish Whistle today. I don't know if they're going to be on board with cost-sharing to raise the grade of their parking lot. So another possible alternative, if they're not going to play ball financially, is to simply really raise the level of this entire walkway, maybe extend it up here, so that you have almost like a raised boardwalk that goes around this whole area. And their parking lot will probably continue to flood, but there's nothing I can really do about that. So this area, in terms of raising the grade here, is going to be something that we're going to have to continue to have discussions with these guys about. We could raise the grade of this because we own all of this, so I think that's something we probably would still want to do.
Then how would vehicles, you know, you're going to have two levels in the parking area?
It's going to be funky. One possibility is to actually... I talked with Bill about this today, is possibly making this curve and just having a green strip here, and essentially having a restaurant parking lot here, and a marina operation here.
I like that idea more, because I mean, if we end up raising the grade and we have plenty of parking here, that completely removes the incentive for the fish whistler to cost-share on raising their grade too, because people can just park there and walk to their restaurant if their parking lot...
Yeah, well, they already do that. Another thing that happens is, I know when the boat ramps here, I drive... The easiest way to get to that boat ramp is for me to come through the Fish Whistle and pop right here, because I'm in position to launch. So hopefully by centering this, people will be more inclined to come in here, and I won't be driving my trailer through a really busy restaurant.
I would really like to see, before we go too much farther, to see this plan with the official plat for the Fish Whistle property superimposed on it, because we only have the vaguest idea where those property lines really are. And then we can see...
I think some signage would help you when they come in here, when they come off at Green Street, just say, "Boat ramp entrance."
Let me finish going through these, because we're getting into like little details that we can absolutely talk about for the next year or two while we try to raise money to pull this off. The last two things, we wanted to add significant green space. Again, I know this doesn't look super impressive, but trust me when I say, that is a heck of a lot more green space than it currently exists right now. This is actually a very significant space, which could function as a pocket park. I think there's a really nice opportunity for some sort of iconic public art right here, whether it's a sculpture, whatever it is, that kind of is like a placeholder. This is the marina, and maybe there's little trails coming in and benches or whatever. But that's a significant green addition right there. And we did green up a little bit here in the parking area, in and around the Fish Whistle as well, as well as around, really, the perimeter of this whole area. And if we were to just join these, this could be a neat little additional green plaza area as well. And lastly, the public repeatedly was talking about, we need more kayak access, so we're showing a kayak launch here and a potential kayak storage area here. Maybe we rent kayaks out of here, but that's on the plat. So signage, little details, you know, I don't know that we need to go through all that right now, but I think conceptually, I would like us to be on the same page, like, it's not going to be condos up here, for example. We're not going to be fixing boats here, which, you know, the marina did for years unsuccessfully. So I know, I guess now, I'd just like to open the floor for your guys' comments, but I'm telling you, if we don't endorse a plan soon, we're going to miss out on getting any state money this year, and it pushes us back another year. So I think it's imperative that we keep moving this vision forward. We're never going to have unanimity in the community on something this big, where there's always going to be a lot of opinions. But I think what this shows, if we pull this off, is a very functional marina. That's going to be a significant upgrade from what we have now.
I would like to move that we approve this plan, conceptual plan, or, I mean, what would we call it, to move forward and to apply for funding.
Well, I think the reason that I also want to get this conceptually approved is I still can't raise money until I have a dollar figure.
Right.
And until we approve this conceptually, I can't set Bill or Case loose on this to bring in marine architects or contractors and say, "What is this going to cost? What's this whole thing going to cost? Give me a... At least give me a ballpark within $500,000 of what this is going to cost."
So...
And when we have that number, then we can really start to fundraise, and I've been saying that from day one. So I know we might have some knickknacky things that we still need to iron out, both amongst ourselves and the public, but I think personally, I think this is what the marina should be.
So actually, I think the Fish Whistle and whether or not they're going to cost-share is actually a big deal.
It's a huge...
So you might need to look at two scenarios.
Yes.
One without them on board, and one... And I would just point out that if we cut them off, we're also cutting off some of our own parking area.
Yes, that's... Bill and I discussed that.
We need to think about that, but that's down the road. So I think with that major uncertainty, that shouldn't stop us from moving ahead. And I like the general... I mean, I have differences here and there. I think we all do. And we could, as you say, we could discuss some ad nauseam.
We could nitpick this for more.
And I agree that we need... And I like the general outline, and I think it's all a great improvement.
How confident are you feel that we can get that extension of the piers?
That's a great question. There's actually a meeting at the end of this month where Bill, and it's Case coming with you, we're going to take this plan to a group of state officials from the various organizations within the state bureaucracy that we need approval from, and show this... Show them this plan and basically get a sense for whether this is doable. So hopefully, if we do endorse this on a conceptual level, hopefully we'll have a much better feel for whether this is doable by the end of this.
If we ever have a chance of breaking even, we're going to need those.
I couldn't agree more. I totally agree.
Liz made a motion. I second.
All right. Are there any questions or comments?
Well, I was just going to make a good comment, that coming in, the entrances and exits, the ingress and egress, could conform with if south water opens up around to Queen, the traffic pattern is...
Yes, that's correct.
Won't be interrupted in the future.
Yeah, that's right.
That is happening, isn't it?
And we did talk also about possibly connect... Bumping out and connecting to Wilmer Park to give people another way to get out, not necessarily park their trailers, but the more ways people can get out of this facility, I think, the better. Some residents, I'm sure, will disagree, but that's off the site, actually, right now, so.
That's good.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of endorsing this conceptually, this concept plan?
Conceptually.
All those in favor of endorsing our current concept plan?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, let the record show that we unanimously voted to endorse our current concept plan for the marina, yeah?
Is that available online?
It is.
Yeah.
On the website.
I think it is on the website.
We have a... We have a, actually, electronic version of it somewhere, I think.
It's on the website, because it was there for the charrette.
On the website.
It's also on the Chestertown Spy.
On the website, yeah.
It's on the Spy at least.
The latest one?
Well, I don't know that... The JPG that I have doesn't include all of the, like, the engineering stuff to the right.
That's what I saw.
We'll check it out for you.
Get you one.
Yeah.
And by the way, we... The engineers, they do owe us landscape plans, and they do us estimation. It's all in the RFP that we opened in March or April. So those things, we don't necessarily have to get for sketch plans or concept plans of landscape architect, but we may want... We want... May want to in the end. This was a $40,000 grant that we got from the state for engineering. It's been a bargain all the way around. Been tremendous how much we got out of it.
But we're going to push them for more.
Absolutely. And the people who fund that from Waterway Improvement, they're also going to be at this jurisdictional review meeting that we're having later this month with the Corps of Engineers and the Maryland agencies to help promote what we're trying to do here, to help us, you know, because, believe it or not, you need help with your own state sometimes.
I will say that if you look at almost any municipal marina on the eastern shore, they're all funded by the Waterway Improvement Fund. So to have them on our side is, I like, a really, really big deal. Okay, let's move on to ward reports. Why don't we start with Liz?
Thank you. I... The one thing I wanted to bring up was a question about where we were with the crossing guard. That's already been answered, so I'm going to move on.
Just got lucky there.
That's it for you?
For this time.
Good work, Liz.
Unless you want me to bring up Smokey Stoves.
No, no, save that one. Linda?
I've had a request for speed bumps on High Street in the vicinity of the Imperial Hotel and the theater. Simply, and is... Let me get it. I can't, can never remember. Is that town?
The 200 block?
High Street.
Yeah, that's owned by the town.
Okay. With children running out from the theater, running out in the street. I think it's, you know, probably the time of day, and they don't look, and actually, I think, the last time I was in Chesapeake City, I think there was a speed bump every 100 feet. And I would really like... I'm serious. Saturday mornings at the farmer's market, I don't know where these people think they're going, but they're... We've gotten... Thank you for getting the crosswalk signs out there again. Thanks, chief. And, but it just amazes me, all the people that there are in town, on the streets on Saturday morning, and cars fly through that intersection and down High Street.
Flying through.
Hmm?
I would bet you there are not... Very few cars are going more than 15 miles an hour.
Oh, you need to be down there as early as...
Look, I've been judging car speeds for a long time.
It's 25 is the limit.
You think it's going faster?
You want to get a little standout there on the corner with the radar on it, on that crosswalk right there?
Speed bump request.
Speed bump request. Do we need to get the businesses to sign? Okay, because you had given me that form, and I...
Well, yeah, I mean, we use it for residential streets. This would be the first one, other than, I'm not even going to call Coward Street residential by... I mean, commercial by the school, where we put a wider crosswalk. This will be the first time we...
Well, that's like a...
I mean, maybe everybody's for it, but it's, you know...
It's for pedestrian safety. Now, I would like to...
Pedestrians aren't supposed to cross in the middle of the street.
No, that's what I...
But tell the kids that.
Aren't there that?
Our demographics are changing.
Tell the parents you have kids.
Let me tell you something. The things I see in Wilmer Park, in Fountain Park in the morning with the kids in the trees and every place, you know, I don't want to go there, but anyway.
You're going to get a net for that.
Shoot it up.
Oh, gosh. Okay, now, I would like to introduce something else. It's a go-ahead, as far as I know, for the Market Bags and for the Garden Club, so...
We voted on it, also.
Yes, we did. We did have some questions after that, but that's a go. I would like to introduce this as an experiment. We have three food trucks, one approved, two pending, that will be coming to Chestertown. I would like to see them, and other people have expressed the same wants, to come to the farmer's market on Saturday mornings. So as an experiment, I would like to see if we can reserve the parking area in front of the nearly new shop for the three food trucks as an experiment. I would just like your comments and see whether you would...
Well, one of them isn't approved yet.
One is approved, two aren't. But right now, we have a maximum of three, and I think only three will...
We've approved two.
You know, what's the third one?
Did you approve, approve...
We approved the Smurf, the truck and the taco.
Okay, okay, sorry. All right, two approved, and the next one will be Aaron Leslie.
Okay, I don't know who that is. What are they making?
He makes the most delicious pies, cakes. It's a bakery, you know, that we really don't...
Why don't you get a stand at the market?
He's in... He's already in the farmer's market. He started Saturday in the farmer's market. Yes.
Cake of Life.
Thank you. I couldn't remember what it was.
Thanks to Jim, he said.
Thank you. And I saw you interviewing him, didn't you?
Have you talked to the nearby food retailers?
That's what I'm concerned about, the restaurants in that area.
I haven't talked to anybody yet. I would just like to go ahead to use this as an experiment.
Is that a town parking lot?
It is owned by the town.
I think before...
I think it's better to get it right before we do it.
I think before we approve it, you should make sure that your constituents that have nearby, you know, brick-and-mortar food vending areas are on board, because I think you're going to find that they're probably not super excited about it.
They were against coffee in the farmer's markets, and gosh, no.
This would be Saturday from 8 to noon.
Plus, we haven't actually seen one of them in operation yet.
Well, you can go to the farmer's market next Saturday morning and see them.
Ashleigh had her taco truck there during 1812.
Right.
But, I mean, we haven't actually seen how they are operating yet, and how they're cleaning up their trash, and wow.
I would recommend that before we approve that, that you go and take a... I would, I would recommend that before we approve that, that you go and take a, get a litmus test of the nearby shop.
Not a problem.
And then bring it back to us. And if they're all on board, then I think we could say.
I have no problem with any of them, but I also realize they pay taxes, pay rent.
And they will pay, be paying a license fee and they'll be paying.
I like, I like the direction of that experiment, because that's, could potentially be a draw for more people to come down to the farmer's market.
Well, there's another business that I would like to get in there. It's not a food truck, but.
Yeah. I, I like it. I mean, you, especially for the younger generation, you see this all the time in your bigger cities like DC. All the food trucks are lined up, especially outside of big events that are going on, and it really can just be a draw for more people to come to the farmer's market.
Could they line up on High Street, right in front of Fountain Park?
Well, what are you going to, I mean, now before the bricks are finished or later or what?
Yeah, I meant now. I mean, I'm not thinking all three fit into that auxiliary parking lot. They're pretty big and that's a small lot. I'm just thinking that around the park might be fun.
High Street, a High Street would be okay.
Like, that's where.
And I mean, honestly, all those, all those food trucks, they're not crossing over with any restaurant anyway. So it's, I almost don't think you need approval from.
The cake one might.
I don't know. I kind of disagree. One of the, one of the criticisms that I heard before I got into office was the council does all these things and they never even ask the business owners before they do it. And so I don't want to, I don't want to repeat that mistake. I think, I would, I would encourage you to bring this back in two weeks and just do an informal survey up and down High Street and let us know what they.
But why shouldn't, I mean, you wouldn't survey another restaurant on a block if a new restaurant is opening up a block? So it's.
I agree with that.
It's inconsistent.
Those apples and apples.
This is exactly how we get perceived as being anti.
Both of those people are paying rent in a brick and mortar operation and paying taxes to the town that are way above them beyond the future.
But more so, I think I'm concerned about, you know, parking's already really tight for the farmer's market. Now we're talking about giving away probably nine spots total?
Well, we've cut, almost cut it in half with the brickwork, so, well, I would.
All right, so does that sound like a reasonable?
Yeah, not a problem. I'll get my little spreadsheet out.
Get your little tally, tally sheet out.
I think this might be a matter of placement, maybe Monument Road would work, depending on.
Well, then, and, you know, then comes people walking across Cross Street, you know, with the trap.
Seeing with their baskets of fruit. But anyway, I do want to say way in here that we have started the widening of the brick sidewalk on High Street to accommodate artisans so that we can free up a little bit more grass and get it seeded and sodded later this fall. So that's coming along beautifully. I'm sure they made more progress today.
Do you have anything else, Liz? Ward three, all is well. Good work. Mr. Stevenson?
Last meeting, I reported that we had three new benches in the dog park and I'm sure I mentioned the fact that the three that are on order are for the walking trail. Your people from your ward asked me from time to time, out of Point, they're not for the dog park, they're for the walking trail, they're different, a little bit different. And they, not only, they've been shipped, they just haven't gotten here yet.
You said shipped?
Shipped, shipped, sent. The factory got rid of them.
All right.
And so we'll have them, I would think within a couple of weeks they'll be installed.
I think they're walking.
And I did visit the new rail to trail section. I think it's really great. But I want to ask about our sign committee. Because I can't imagine why we just couldn't have it the street intersection, Gilkes Trail, indicating the trail where Cadiz Street is and where all the other streets.
I had a meeting with like directional signage, I had a meeting with a subcommittee that I put together, and I have a detailed two or three page list of recommendations, and one of their recommendations is exactly what you're saying. I think what's going to be important is when we do all that signage, that it have a uniform look throughout town. So it's a little bit of a conundrum whether or not we do a bunch of directional signage here before the marina gets done and while we're still kind of busting out that rail trail. I would like to see it all done comprehensively, but I totally agree with you. And I would also like to see arrows like, hey, you know, maybe Monford Park is this way in .8 miles and this direction takes you to, you know.
Yeah, I just meant at the intersection. I mean, it's a simple thing. If it's green, we could make it brown or something.
Yeah, I think that signs like that for parks are brown.
Just stick it on top. The hole's already there.
Too busy building them.
Oh, I see what you mean, on the streets.
Yeah. We've really stressed ourselves to try to get these built. And I do want to say that I'll be happy to hang that sign out. The Gateway Park, we're still having trouble with the State Highway Administration concerning a 1951 drain adjustment that went across there that obviously was cured when the trucking facility went in there. Not there anymore. And they've hogtied us with that. And I'm trying to work through it, but it's a big disappointment that a simple thing like that can't be fixed when 40 years ago it was changed for permanent.
Do you have anything else, Mark?
No, I will say this, for the people who back up to the, the new section.
Yeah.
Their yards and so forth are pretty well kept.
I know, I was pleasantly surprised myself.
When they opened that up, they was going to think, oh my God, that's going to.
Yeah.
People were mowing their grass and they're straightening that. I don't know whether it was that way all along, but it looks pretty darn good now, so compliments to anybody that lives on that, has that business on that street.
All right, we're going to move on to item nine, requests from the public to be on the agenda. Barbara Reed, Walk to End All Times. Thanks for your patience.
It's been a good meeting. Thank you for allowing me to speak. As we mentioned, Chestertown is a wealthy town. Here in Kent County, we have a large per capita population of seniors and I know personally I've been affected by the disease, so I'm very excited to work with other healthcare professionals, Point, for example, Washington College, Walgreens is also getting involved, and then the Health Department. But we would like to invite the town, and I appreciate the use of Wilmer Park. It's just October 4th, we're going to have an event. And I can tell already we're getting the attention of the association and we're like a pilot, because if you live here in Chestertown in Queen Anne's County, even to go to one of the walks, you have to go to Delaware or Salisbury across the Bay Bridge. So I really hope that Chestertown can shine, greater Chestertown, and we have a wonderful event on October 4th. Thank you again for the use of the park. We're going to use the rails to trails. So I would like to permission to put some signs on the rails to trails.
Somebody's already put a sign or two on.
People have done that, and I think it was for All Times.
So we have your blessing.
Well, no, it's nice that you asked, though.
It's fair now, so.
Yeah, what are the times?
9:00 AM is registration, rain or shine. One of the things that's been confusing is there's lots of walks in a box is what the association calls it. So we really haven't been able to get on the website, but we're pushing for that. So if you go to the Eastern Shore Walk and Salisbury, so we're trying to make this the Chestertown Walk and then make it easier, because not everybody's online. For example, you know, at Point, they're going to register as a teen and it's just easier to show up that day. My question too, for the police, if we could get somehow crossing at Cross Street, there could be a presence if somebody is speeding. The walk starts at 10:00 after a ribbon cutting ceremony at 10:20, and people can choose either walk around Wilmer Park or we could head down towards Dixon Drive and then turn around there. We're not trying to make this a 5K or anything like that, just, you know, something to recognize the disease, to support caregivers, just to build awareness. And this is a big step, just as I heard Parliament Sony saying, this year is, you know, just an introduction, it's our first, and I hope to make it an annual event with support. So again, I'm very happy that others have gotten involved and we need awareness and I'm not good at public speaking, but this is.
So from us, you want permission for more signage or signage the day of the event? Or do you want signage like advertising that the event's forthcoming, like now?
Like say even next year, because this year it quickly passed by, but will we be allowed to make a banner and hang it over the top of High Street? Would that be something permissible if I?
No, Sam Shogey brought up the idea that the old warning for the rail on, on High Street by Dixon was up there, and I called the MTA and I said, do you have any objections to us going up there and strapping signs on it? And they said, really, no. It's ideal, it really is ideal. There are ladders on either ones and we're not going to let anybody from the public do that. But I think that would be a perfect place for a banner that's promoting something, because anything else that involves the utility companies putting up, they won't because of liability issues with them getting, with them sagging and getting across truck drivers.
I don't like doing that.
So I think that's, that's great for next year's or whatever. I would say, don't, don't put them up farther out than 30 days because people's, with normal memories can't.
Sure, attention's.
We have no control keys right now, so. And then just, keeping it simple's been one of my mottos all along, but making it a nice event, you know, just even, I'm so glad to have the rails to trails, because side out here in Chestertown with the three routes, I couldn't see it being safe, you know. I hope the fish whistle gets award. I almost slipped on silk, that was on the wrong way the other day.
Yep, that's a problem.
Okay, well, thank you for your time and hopefully we'll see you there.
Thank you.
And then we can form teams and just.
I commend you for putting this together. I worked with one of the college students and it was about, it was two years ago.
We put her in touch, yeah.
We went to meetings in Easton and because it wasn't a huge event like Salisbury for the Eastern Shore, she, it just.
I met her, Taylor.
They would, Shriver, yeah. And it never materialized. And it's, so it's taken two years.
And Jennifer did Patrick, she's gotten on board. I think Kimberly Beryl, Gail Yorki, one of the nurses at the Health Department, like we've had to call and say, please see us here. I'm sure a lot of people who are taking care of loved ones are just trying, we need them.
Kimberly sent an email to every resident of Point today who has email license, getting teams sent up.
We have a population that's pretty well hit with Alzheimer's, I think, because we have an older populat, maybe it's because I'm getting older, but I seem to know more and more people who are diagnosed with Alzheimer's.
I just got a copy of a study that was done in 2009. We were looking at our area and how to get healthcare for the Democrats. So there's just, there's quite a few things that brought my attention that per capita in the state, we have the largest number of deaths. You know, and one out of three people will be impacted. So we need to know more about it, so this needs attention and research and our resource in Kent County is the people. Hope to see a lot of you there on October 4th at 9:00. And the college is doing a nice job of getting involved. Dina in the dining hall has like taken this idea and ran with it with the Purple Friday and if they know some facts about the disease, they can get free coffee, for example, and things like that. So I really hope the youth of Kent County also gets involved to support, you know, the seniors. All of us should be involved. I mean, that's what I heard today, too, and we need to embrace each other. So this is an event that we can do that.
Look, once this meeting footage airs on cable channel seven, I'm sure you'll have thousands of people.
You're on TV.
Again, thank you for your time.
Seventy-seven for some of us people who have a digital phone.
All right, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Yes?
First of all, I apologize, I couldn't get here immediately after the 1812 event, because I wanted to make a special effort in saying that in constructing the prelude, not cough, that was also a big thing, but specifically the prelude. I thought at one time it may be sort of daunting because it was, we were trying to do quality of the supply and we've got so many people reenactors in Canada and America. But I want to tell you, without any doubt, it was a pleasure to work with Bill Anderson, who was of great help. We were doing organizational list, but it was, but I knew that it wasn't going to be helpful, could not happen unless Bill looked at it, because he was so incredibly helpful. And Adrian, she's Baker, and all the police were phenomenal, the yard, the town yard people, whatever we needed. And Linda was very helpful. But I just wanted to say that it was such a pleasure and it was so seamless that I think that we should need to call attention to it. And the other thing that was, was really a surprise to me, and it was my negligence, because I just didn't know about them, the emergency management system of the county is phenomenal. And whatever we asked for, they were there, they were, they were for the prelude. I don't think people really appreciate the people who are taking care of us every minute of every day. And if you ever get Ken, get out to the detention center where the emergency management headquarters are, and they are really, I mean, even when we met, there'd be eight people there, 10 people in different classes of just taking care of us. And I really think that it would be great, it would be a pleasure for a gift from us to go out there and see it. It makes me feel very good, but thank you. Not only that's not just the money that you can enjoy, but all the other things.
The behind scenes man hours.
I agree. It's a great.
Great. Anybody else? I thought you were raising your hand again. I was like, just said some stuff. All right.
Move to be adjourned.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Are they opposed? Let the record show that we unanimously adjourn this meeting.